Six thirty and a half.
I don't know where that one went.
Six thirty thirty.
Go here. Got it. Share screen. Or close session. Share. Anything said in here can be, is being recorded.
I was gonna say. Just me, myself, and I here, it's all right. Yeah. How are you?
Good, how are you today?
Oh, good.
You're good. Are they in executive session?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they've been, oh, about fifteen minutes, so.
Okay.
Maybe like.
It started at seven.
It does, so that the, the meeting itself, like, technically starts at six thirty.
Oh.
And so they can go into executive session for like thirty hours. Normally, when they're done and everything, it's about seven-ish, and so.
Well, I'm Marjorie.
Colton.
Colby, nice to meet you. I'm on the PNC board.
Oh, okay.
So I did, I just wanted to come and see how different this is.
Okay, yeah.
And ours starts at seven also, and I was, that's why I was thinking this started.
Ah, yeah, so. I don't know what's on the website, but I know it usually starts at six thirty. And then, but I mean, they immediately just go straight into closed session, so. People normally start getting there around seven because they know that almost six around three.
Well, how long have you been on the course? I don't.
I've been here about.
Back here. Because I was here when the newest officer. Was sworn in. But. It's, you know, we're not, we don't always have them at our.
Right.
So it's like, this place team comes and talks a little bit.
Yes.
Especially if it's, um, developers, you know, they do something. Like the water burger, he was here talking about this security and stuff.
Yes.
So. He likes to handle this.
Yeah, yeah, actually, and it's funny because I've never been to a PNC meeting, so it'd be kind of interesting to see. So. Yeah, it's. I'm not sure even if there's anything really crazy on the agenda tonight. But sometimes this place is packed, and there's a thing like when they ban fireworks and.
Yes.
The water burger too, they were good for that too, so it's just.
Well, ours was packed with the water.
Yeah.
And that access road there. But you know. The, that has such a high turnover over there, the people don't really know the history.
Right.
And they're not good talent.
Yeah.
So.
So.
It's, uh, you know. And it's really a shame.
Oh, yeah. Oh, shit, hold on.
And my neighbor told me about that Rick, the other nine in front of Marty B's. I, the, the way they described it, I can't believe somebody could kill.
Oh, that's how we were saying it too, but I wasn't there, but I think we saw the pictures, and I'm like, man, I don't know. How to just love.
Well, they weren't at Marty B's, they were at that Trios place. And having dinner, and then when they came out, it was like.
Oh.
It was horrible, they said.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, that intersection is bad right there because it's, uh. People do U-turns there all the time.
I know, they do, and that's the problem. And, you know, and I'm behind Saddle, but not inside, but behind it. And, um. We're kind of caught between that, because see, the light is there to go into Montana. And then, you know, the horses entrance here, and I cut through there, because like I said, I live right at the back. And then, so the traffic. Sometimes you have to sit there for the longest. Because I guess it's just all the building, uh, Justin, and over across thirty-five.
Yeah.
I mean, sometimes that four oh seven in front of that, that, it's just.
During the day, that's why they did a traffic survey, I guess, and that's, I think they might talk about that side, I think it's. What was on there, but yeah, went up like. They did the same thing, I think. In two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, that's right, and it's twenty-three, okay, so yeah, I'm still trying to figure out the year and this, yeah. So it's, until twenty-one, we did the same thing, and so they did this, and they did it last October. And they went up like fifteen hundred people on average.
Oh, I believe it.
Just on a day, I mean, it was.
I mean, sometimes we just, you know, like, I would just sit there because traffic is coming both ways.
Oh, it's crazy, because they said it's like, I think during the peak hours, they estimated like twenty. It was like twenty-six thousand people that were driving through there, and that's just the peak hour, and it came, you know, they did like eight, nine in morning, and then. You know, I think like five, six, you know. So just very, we've been doing it every year for, oh, maybe the desert. Oh. We've been doing it every year for, I think, five years, and this year they went up. Um, I live over on Gibbons and Seals, and just over there, we went from like seven hundred. Per day to nine hundred, just in the last year, so we've done it every year in October. And it was, some roads didn't go overall, some went up substantially, you know, of course. Four oh seven, and of course McMakin and Porter.
Yes.
Those all went up substantially, so it was interesting to see and see which one that's, but, uh, but. You know.
Well, I mean, you know. The speed limit there in front of Marty B's and all is fifty.
Right.
But nobody goes fifty, they're all speeding faster, and that's where that truck couldn't stop. When that guy was turning around, and then just all of them got into.
This way, we drove, we were right behind. Police car, it just took off, and then we rolled up right, we're on the right, and then truck was on the side, and you know, I think you get pretty hard to get up on your side.
That's right.
And then two in the ditch, and one was making it pretty good, but. Um, so the kids in that, the kids in the truck. The, one of the trucks, yeah. Yeah, there was a truck on the side. Yeah, the one, like, the gray one, they had on the side, yeah. Yeah, yeah. But. It's scary looking. Yeah, I know, it's scary.
That's what I was telling, my neighbor told us about, because they were having dinner at Trios. And, um, the way they described it to us, I was like, he said it was a miracle, and I was.
Well, the back of the white truck wasn't even, they were coming, they were going north. And they came across. And hit the other truck, so they weren't even, the guy was just coming over the road there, he just, just, they just, they, you know, they came across that way, but they're going south, and they. The truck came along and, you know, went over the curb, and he's boom, and he smacked into him right there, and he was like, they came out of nowhere without this. That, oh, yeah. Yeah, I think they're, they're trying to talk today, it was nice, they were trying to talk with text out about putting no turn.
We need a sign after that, because so many people do that.
Yes, there's no dedicated light, so it's just, I mean, even today, I was there, you know, you have people just, you know, you have a line, a hard line, and they're just sitting there waiting, turn around, like. Put a light, go, go somewhere, pull in the.
Everything all starts, they turn, when somebody's going too fast, you can't stop, and they all.
What's that, it's. Yeah, that. That part was bad, I was just. The U-turn, everything too, is just, I don't know why people do that. That's why more cars don't get hit on the hilltop, crossing, oh, yeah, the fractures and the, I don't like to go, because I go four oh seven French town, I'm sorry, Gibbons. There's a fire station, I'm afraid to do that anymore, because I'm good, so I'm good to a central.
Piper's not, you know. Friend, but she lives in Arkham.
Yeah.
Warrenville, but she's said, we've just come to do something about that intersection there. She said somebody's gonna get killed there, and I'm surprised they didn't put a light there because of the fire station.
Right.
You know, I thought surely when they.
Yeah, usually they have.
Yeah, so that they can, right. Can get out when they need to.
Yeah.
So we thought that was kind of strange, but she said, I want, I want to do something, you know, we need to get some people involved and get a light there. And, and that's why I always, I come, I go to Ditten all the time, and when I come home, I come through Saddle Road. Because I don't want to turn left.
Yeah.
On to Gibbons and then come to my house.
That's, yeah, I do, and the bad thing is, it's, you know, four oh seven is all the text guys, so they have to do, and it's just, talking to them sometimes is like pulling teeth, because they're, you know. They've got to know the thousand different things they're doing, and they're like, well, we'll get to y'all when we can, it's just.
And we'll just make our own sign.
Right, yeah.
And just kind of put it out there one night.
Do it, just be like, oh, there you go, it's there.
Yeah, we'll never know.
Yes. Because, yeah, they, the bad thing is, including, I've always just experienced, is they have these, you know, engineers, and. Next, oh, our engineer did that, so we're gonna, but it's clearly not working, so we should, you know, unfortunately, that's just really.
And I.
Didn't think about it.
Well, I was.
That's all we.
Most people, it's chain stuff.
Yeah. You want to lift it across? Got it?
Yeah. You said you went to Gibbons and Seals.
Sitting right in that house.
I live in marketing.
Hey, how are you? Okay. I was there, like. Yeah, I'm on road. I want to follow the city, I'm getting involved. Great. That's been the most. Yeah, now was at the last PNC meeting, uh.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, I want to see how you guys do it, so.
I love to see this.
Yeah, you want to sit on the front? By the ever seat, right? Right here.
Thank you. I'm saving mine. You know, we'll make you one too. And then we can also.
How is she? Yeah. If you go to home again. I don't know. And you get my back? Oh, that's weird. You all stood.
Marjorie. Uh, the army. And. Well, we.
Because I don't know.
I thought it was. So careful now. They're fine. I'm doing. You know. And.
Even then, you.
And one. Yeah. Yeah. And for that. There. Ten more.
Good.
I think. You are.
The. I think that was just there. From the, who? That would be good. Our name, really, so. That's. Well, I'm. Checking already, you know.
Well, the. It's. You know that. Um, I got. For that.
Sure, well, you know, it's all different. Continue this.
So. Always. So.
Me, that's.
But, yeah.
My choice today. Sorry, sir, I take that one. Yeah, sorry. But it is. Oh, I'm six feet over instead of six feet under. Yeah.
Can't start till that was.
Anything, sure it does. You're sorry. I'm sorry. No.
Time being seven P M, reconvened into open meeting, no action taken, closed session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Time being seven P M, reconvened into open meeting, no action taken, closed session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Time being seven P M, reconvened into open meeting, no action taken, closed session. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
In two three five, we wish to say, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Public participation, if you'd like to speak on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, please fill out the form and hand it to Tammy. Please indicate on the form if you wish to speak during the discussion on a specific agenda item. Remember, council members are not allowed to answer questions during the public participation and please state your name and address for the record. Nobody, okay. So we have a proclamation.
Young lady. He put it in here, Roberto Tutu Guttiel, correct?
Yes.
Was honored by Grand Canyon fan in celebration of her hundred first birthday on January twenty two thousand twenty. And Roberta Guttiel was born in way across Georgia on January the tenth nineteen twenty two.
Right.
And Roberta Tutu Guttiel served her country with valor in the United States Navy in World War Two and received a Congressional Veteran Award. From Congressman Hala Burridge in two thousand and sixteen, right, said thank you very much. Roberto Tutu Guttiel married Kathleen Claude Tiel on May thirty fourth nineteen forty six and remained happily married for fifteen years until she was passed away. And Roberta Tutu Guttiel, she fought with four children, two siblings. Barnville, Claude Tiel, dinner at the Rock, Marianne Tiel again, Ermira Tiel again, which sixteen grandchildren and thirty six grandparents. Tutu Guttiel and Claude Tiel are for leaving active duty to serve as a commissary commissioner of the Department of Labor, very involved in the community and started the Institute of Human Services. Which was the first homeless help in Honolulu nineteen seventy eight.
Amazing.
Nation, one of the first in the nation, other states called my father saying, how did you solve the homeless problem? You know, you met for me. Roberto Tutu. Claude Tiel, everybody's wife, forty four years of Latin, nine three language. Roberto Tutu Guttiel remained very active in the local community, supporting major events and shelters, being a member of the colonial day and taking the annual double of fourth of July parade. Now, therefore, I got my parents in the mayor of the town of Barnville section due hereby proclaim, January twenty twenty three, as Roberto Tutu Guttiel. I'm in the town of Barnville and on behalf of the town council and the citizens of Barnville and I would sincerely congratulate the investment of Tutu for. Many more happy days in the future to share with family and friends.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think he was starting on the path, started from a shelter in Hawaii.
You have no idea what this means to me, really, my family has loved being here and it, they really, it's made the end of my life. Something.
So in, they bought now five houses that are named the Tutu Burton Houses, my mom's name is Roberta. Everybody calls her Tutu because that is Hawaiian for grandmother, actually, that's Tahitian for grandmother, cuckoo is kind of Hawaiian, but they kind of. So these houses are called the Tutu Burton Houses, if a homeless person has to go to the hospital, that is not long enough to go back to the shelter. Then they go to a Tutu Burton House and they have L B Ns and R Ns to take care of them until they're healthy enough to go back. They have a women and children center, they have, you have done all kinds of, even done some of these. Houses made out of storage containers, they have all kinds of things trying to get people back on their feet, my dad was not one of them, just sitting around. On the street corners or any of that, he had been watching water for the all around Honolulu, you know, marching at parades, he had. Postels, grand, whatever, food, dinner, night, wedding, time, honey, happily, he takes you to all the things. He had the post department, he could save all the little samples if they couldn't deliver them, they would bring them to him. It was unbelievable, he had the Buddhist, the Baptist, the Parry Christian, the Episcopal, the Baptist, the, you name it. Down there working at the shelter, he would not accept stairs, never mind, he wanted, and he said, there's too much paperwork to get that staff. Anyway, but they even had the university come and build an aquaponics garden at the top. Um, for the big, big plants and they grow a lot of their own produce, there's a professor from the university who applied in one year twice, he had to be my mom and running himself. He has a household name and they are a household name, the things they did, they brought in, and my mom should get the credit for helping the homeless shelter because I would come home from college. I don't think, one time we had Frankenstein, another time the Boston Striker was president, something, I mean, my dad was breaking. And I think my mom finally said, you know, we need to help them somewhere besides, but anyway, it is amazing, it is grown. The homeless problem is pretty well fixed now, it is amazing.
Quite the role model, Rob.
She really is, she's amazing, I've had so many people say, if I had one wish, it would be your mom was. University of Alabama. Been, I mean, she graduated from there, her mother did, her grandfather and her great grandfather was in first class at the university. Um, she knows every football player on the team, she has a spreadsheet, she watches every game, she got a letter signed by Nick Satan for her country's birthday.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Not just a little lady.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it. Recognition of Barnville Police Department Sergeant.
I hold this governor's office where.
Hold his governor's office where.
That I will back up. We say to thank the town of Barnville.
Say to Texas, the town of Barnville, Texas.
And will to best my ability to preserve, protect and defend.
And to the best my ability to preserve, protect and defend.
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And this day.
And this day.
And it works in the town of Barnville, Texas.
And it works as the town of Barnville, Texas, so.
Okay.
No. Didn't take a board, it's alright. Uh, I don't, I'm sorry, I need to part of my, it was what I heard. Awesome, thanks.
Really to start the meeting. Pointed representative liaison reports, Denton County E S D, Jim.
Good evening. Got to have a program, and since you cannot recall all the names of the Alabama football team players. And we have nothing but new players except two at the E S D, I've uh, uh, put together a brief history for each one of the players so that. You may recognize one of them, I don't. Or, or if you ever cross paths with them, you'll go, hey, there's Lewis over there for, or Cliff. Uh, but basically, uh, the meetings that we've been having lately, uh, have been public meeting. For the first thirty minutes to an hour and then it's all closed doors, so we're not privy to what's going on legally or, or the, uh, the attorney staffs or the, uh. The auditors or the, what do you call it, a scientific or forensic auditor to look into the criminal aspect of what supposedly is, has gone on, so we have no juicy news. But what I want to ask you, Jackie, is, uh, when would you like for the chief or, and or the president to come by and talk for ten or fifteen, or five or ten minutes, not ten fifteen? Maybe next month?
Sure.
Okay, I'll see if we can set that up.
Is that okay, was everybody, okay?
I just didn't want, the last time we did it, we got in trouble because they went twenty and somebody who was sitting there wasn't very pleased, anyway.
Oh, okay.
Uh, for the, for the month, uh, two hundred fifty two incidents, a hundred five fire, a hundred forty seven EMS calls. Uh, dispatch a route, uh, one minute, in other words, that's out the door. Uh, dispatched arrival, seven minutes and two seconds, uh, average time of scene is nineteen minutes and fourteen seconds. Uh, we kind of instep a sculpture too for the month, uh, we'd been bumping around at fifteen and sixteen, we had twenty six incidents. Uh, four mutual aids, uh, only one fire, it was a rubbish fire outside. Uh, it looks like we had an authorized controlled burning that, uh, was reported and they also were not investigated that. But pretty much, uh, everything's right down the line, EMS, uh, injuries or illnesses at eleven, in other words, no motor vehicle accidents. And, uh, one, uh, motor vehicle accident, uh, with an injury, it looks like we had somebody run over in, uh, December, oh, this is November. Yeah, a pedestrian. Unless you have anything, if you ever have any questions, please let me know. His reports come in. But thank you, as always, for allowing me to sit in and participate, we got to talk about my salary though, Jackie, it's been, it's been going on weekly now for six weeks.
Put that on the gym on twenty twenty five? I'm kidding, all right?
Oh, that's when you're leaving, no, you're, you're, nevermind, you're on the. Thanks and, yeah, the pay is great.
Thanks, Jim.
Enjoy the raise, Jim. Uh, planning and zoning commission, Dan?
The Planning and Zoning Commission made it through section two of the comprehensive plan. Uh, with several edits that they are going to probably move forward to you at some point in the future, right now they are reviewing section three. Which is the actual land use plan, so we're probably still a couple of months away before you'll see it here, uh, from the recommendation, so. They are taking this quite seriously and going through it with a fine tooth comb to make sure you've got a plan that, uh, hopefully I'll be able to adopt without a lot of change from them.
Thank you. Community development report, Tammy?
Attached in the agenda packet is a copy of the twenty twenty two traffic study that they do annually, there's really no discussion, it's there for your information. Um, at their last meeting, they, um, finalized the survey that's going to be sent out to all of the businesses. And hopefully, we're, they're gonna have thirty days, so hopefully we'll have that done by February two, so they can discuss it at their March meeting and we'll bring that information to council once they have it.
I notice there's a thousand more cars a day out here than there was this time last year.
Yeah.
So, that's why I can't get out my driveway, anyway. Uh, thank you, Tammy, police report, chief?
So in your packet, uh, there's your monthly, uh, stats, uh. Total calls for, uh, the month of December is three hundred and forty three. And of those, uh, officer initiated calls total two hundred and thirty five. Um, I know those officer initiated calls, fifty nine of those were for, uh, traffic stops. Calls for service, which typically generate a report of some sort, a hundred and five, and then we had three medical calls, so if you see anything in there that. Um, sticks out, let me know, or have questions about that?
Thing of note on the suspicious person, vehicle or activity. To just, I, I think I saw something or was there any? Anything that worries you about that one, I don't necessarily recall seeing it that high, but I could be.
Well, we've, for some reason, we're starting to find people, uh, parking in places they're not supposed to be in late at night. Which generates those kind of calls, uh, could be. Um, also, people in areas that look suspicious or that shouldn't be there in particular areas of town, so, but yeah, but we're, we're seeing that go up a little bit for some reason. When I say like lease roads and things of that nature, and people are noticing and calling us. Anything else? Okay, moving on, I also supplied some, some documents there for y'alls, uh, viewing, uh, I told, uh. Reminded y'all that I would have kind of a year end snapshot of kind of what, with a two-year comparison from twenty one to twenty two. Uh, what that is, is, uh. There's, uh, neighbors groups offenses in group A and group B, and that's typically what we deal with the most, uh, is the ones that I, uh, provided you there for twenty one and twenty two. Um, along with kind of the definition of what those two different groups mean, uh, group A is obviously your more serious crimes. And then group B is kind of your, your lower level misdemeanor type stuff. If you see anything that sticks out there, certainly feel free to ask.
In general, it looks like everything's down except for all other offenses in group B.
Yeah, and that one right there is, is, you'll get a lot of class C stuff in there, a lot of, uh, minor possession of alcohol or, um. Just, just some of these off the wall charges that we come across is where those get lumped into warrant arrests, things of that nature.
D W Is are those usually on four oh seven?
For the most part, yes, mm-hmm. Kind of see that they have kind of stayed the same, um. Assaults went down a little. Um, obviously, the drug offenses went down some, criminal mischief went up. Um, but for the most part, most, most things were either steady or, or went down. So I would also like to say that since Sergeant Scudder has come on board to be sergeant, um, he, uh, has now got two cases solved, uh, cleared. And one of them is just something that's blown us both away. Um, we had some, on Stonewood, we had some vehicle burglaries. And, um, we don't know for sure if this person's linked to it, but we're pretty sure he is based on video that we saw. But this person, um, had an extensive, extensive criminal history, we, it's just, I, I don't think I've ever seen anything this extensive, how many pages, seventy one?
Wow.
And. Thirty one arrests, thirty three. So. Federal, federal on down, the reason I'm saying this is, this is a type, so, some of these folks are working in the community as laborers. So, we're trying to kind of get a grip on that because we, we don't know who's trimming trees, we don't know who's doing what, but we're. Now that we've got some more, some more eyes and stuff, we're, we're trying to sort some of that out. So, just want to bring that to your attention, so that was one of my goals, was to have that position, do these type of things, and we've already got two of them cleared up and he's one of them, so. Other than that. Any other questions? Nope. I believe there's a crash comparison in there also, um, you can kind of see the cost for service went down some. And the crash comparison went down a little bit also, so. Just one thing we try to do is to get the numbers to go down instead of going up, so. Right?
Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Town administrator monthly report, December twenty two, financial animal patrol code enforcement and engineering municipal court permits.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, if you'll look at the, uh, first page of your financials, the revenues, this is the one that you've been seeing, I think Cory started this one, uh, when she was here. And I'm carrying this one today, if you like it, I'll keep it in there, but the next page is what I'd like to really talk about, you know. Previously, we've talked about the collected percentages, so sales taxes are tracking, uh, this December represents our, uh. Twenty five percent of our budget year, so we would like to see, um, you know, twenty five percent or better collected if you're looking at this page, so. Sales taxes are doing well, property taxes, that really is. It really doesn't matter at this stage because within the next two months, we'll have ninety eight percent of it, so, you know, we get that all in one, one period. Uh, franchise fees are quite high, um, transfers and others are tracking well, development fees are zero percent. But, uh, on the next page, you'll see what the, uh, the actual budget number is, and as soon as Deer Hollow pays, we will be over our budget for that, uh, revenue item. Uh, permit fees, again, we're still seeing a lot of permits for new houses, additions, uh, remodels. And municipal court, uh, we're still fully staffed, we're, uh, tracking faster than we anticipated and we did anticipate an increase, so. Uh, we're doing even better than we thought we would on municipal court. If you look at the next page, that first page is kind of meaningless, I've decided in my own head because it doesn't have real numbers, this, these are your revenues. Presented as I do, the, uh, expenditures, so you can actually see in real dollars what those percentages mean. Uh, that'll be page, what am I on, page sixteen in your packet, sorry, I was looking at my printout. So if you're on page sixteen, this is the same information that I have on that first page, but now you've got real numbers that see the impact on your budget. So sales taxes, um, you've got seventy two percent remaining, but again, you're seeing that the revenue to date is two hundred thirteen thousand, so I'm just. A little more meaningful information as we talk about budget numbers and expenditures going forward. Um, so if you like both, I can keep them both, or if you like one or the other, I can swap, swap them out, it's two ways of looking at the same information.
I prefer the second page.
Agreed, me too.
That's what I thought as I was going through that, I, you know, we have hard dollars on all our expenditures, but nothing to count it against on our revenues and that was just kind of bothering me, so. And that was just kind of bothering me, so. Yes, I'll keep the sales tax graph for the trending, uh, to see that. And if you go to your expenditures. Um, again, our expenditures are in check, we're at twenty-five percent of budget. Um, so other than transfers, and again, uh, as I stated last month, those are. Early, uh, year transfers that we make into other accounts. For land, Tana and some of those things. So that one, it looks like it's, you know, tracking fast, but it won't, uh, probably exceed a hundred percent in the end of the year. And again, those funds are actually still under our control, most of them, because they're transferred to separate accounts that will be paid later. Most of it is, yes. Back to my report, because I have my notes. Most of it's land, Tana, but again, we, that's, we also transfer into the vehicle equipment replacement fund and the capital improvement fund as well, so. With the details on that. If you go straight to administration next, that is your page. Eighteen. Again, we'd like to see seventy-five percent. Uh, supplies is run, are running high, that is actually mostly software. That's a category that includes our software purchases and so there was licensing. Uh, that came out of that, so that one is why that, that is why that one's running a little faster than the, the twenty-five percent. Those are annuals, those are not repeating, so yeah, the big annual contracts come in, so that's why that one's running hot. Everything else is, uh, certainly within, within range, which is what we want to see. Page nineteen, again, police. Still looking for that, uh, that. Seventy-five percent or better remaining, co- again, contracted services and this one is similar to services in the other. Uh, those are annual contracts, those are the big, uh. Chief, what is it? Radios and dispatch. So again, we pay all those upfront, uh, you know, in that first quarter of the year.
The maintenance. Just regular maintenance, it's the fifty-six percent remaining of the budget. For maintenance.
It should be for people. Your maintenance, all changes and.
We may run a little hot in that one because we've got full staff. And our, without that extra Tahoe in there, we're starting to, you know, see some repair needs. So we may have to amend that one in the future, but, uh, again, we're being careful with it and watching it closely. Do you have any questions on the financials? I told Chief to put Scudder on that because he seems to be able to solve other problems. The graphics were approved, go ahead, Chief, that's your, that's your baby.
I've now started copying that on everything I'm doing with these folks and they're, it's a. For lack of a better term, I don't trust them. I don't believe they're doing what they're, what they say they're doing, but we've been going back and forth on graphics, which shouldn't be. Because we've, I've sent pictures and everything, they took pictures of it and all that. So they're basically telling me that graphics is what's holding it up. And it's the only vehicle out of four hundred that are in there. That. It should be finished. So. That's, that's all, that's, that's the latest update I have. So. Uh, Dana Equipment, Dana Public Safety, they're out of Fort Worth. So. Remember that name.
And that's all I have unless you had questions on any of the other reports in there.
Thank you, Ted, appreciate it. Consent agenda, this agenda consists of non-controversial housekeeping items required by law. Items may be approved with a single motion. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by any council member by making such a request prior to a motion and a vote on the consent agenda. Number one, consider approval of the December twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Number two, consider acceptance of the twenty twenty-two racial profiling report. Number three, consider approval of resolution of the town council of the town of Bartonville ordering a general election to be held on May sixth twenty twenty-three. For the purpose of electing three council members, place one, place three and place five for two-year terms each. And providing a joint service contract with Denton County. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the city agenda, number one, two, three.
Second.
Those, all those in paper. Motion passes five zero, thank you. Regular items, discuss and consider approval of the purchase of signage for Roadrunner, from Roadrunner Traffic Supply in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-nine. Dollars and eighty-five cents for placement throughout the town to enhance driving safety and authorize the town administrator to expend budgeted funds on behalf of the town.
Mayor and Council, this one is coming to your attention because it exceeds my signature authority. This is within the budget that, uh, the seventy thousand dollar amendment that y'all made. For signage, again, this will be for creating the, uh, additional three-way stops in three locations. As well as all of the signs, it does not include the striping, uh, or the radar signs. Again, those will come to you later, uh, if they're within budget and within my signature, uh, signature authority. Uh, I'll just tell you when I'm doing it. But this one is large enough, uh, that I want to, you know, I think it's right to bring it to council and it's.
Does it include the speed bumps either?
That, no, this is not going to include those, those are, it's still within budget, but yes, this is just the signage. And again, it's a, a little higher than I anticipated, but, uh, I had, um, another person looked over who's in public works. And he said, these are actually, they're set in posts, they're not basically pile driving them in. So if they, uh, get knocked over, it should be easier to replace and they should be more substantial as well, so they don't lean. So we don't have signs, you know, pointing every which direction throughout the town. Do y'all have any questions? Again, the bid is attached. And this includes, and this includes all of it, the, the livestock signs, um. Uh, in addition to this, as part of this, under our town entry signs, uh, town limits, we are putting permanent, uh. Fireworks prohibited ordinance information as well, so it'll be year-round as people come through, they'll be able to see that like a lot of other towns have.
At the entrance underneath the speed limit, yeah. Yeah.
See that on here.
Yep.
And, and the verbiage will, it will dictate, uh, identify that it is a town ordinance, it's enacted.
Yes, and we're gonna do a, we're still gonna do more public information on that, uh, you know. Uh, to just to make sure people understand, that was not a one-time thing for New Year's. That was an ordinance that y'all passed that bans the use and possession of fireworks within town limits.
Questions or discussion or? Nope, you have a motion?
Take a motion to approve the purchase of signage from Roadrunner Traffic Supply in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And authorize the town administrator to expend budgeted funds.
Second.
All is in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Number five, discuss and consider approval of a resolution creating a special events advisory committee. Staff report, Tammy.
And this is being brought forward, uh, at the December meeting, council directed a resolution being brought forward. Uh, for a special events advisory committee for the planning and execution of the town's fiftieth anniversary, which is in October. And other events is deemed necessary by the town council. Included in the packet is the draft, uh, resolution that I worked on with the mayor. It's for your discussion. And then once you decide that, then you'll need to direct us how you want to advertise or how you want to solicit for those.
We discussed, um, putting two council members on it and then four other community. Participants or something.
Six, we talked, so we were worried about getting too many.
Yeah.
Six total, yeah.
Six total.
Two council members and four community. Is everybody okay with that?
Right.
Any? Any other ideas on it or?
No, I think as, as long as we keep it. The numbers down so that we can have the direction that instead of having to make a decision as to how we're going to appease everyone that we all move together at the same time and move forward.
As far as advertising for it, we can put it out on our website like we did for the.
Media application that we. Have for.
For any other committee, right? Yeah.
Two of y'all, do two of y'all want to be on it?
This item isn't for the appointment of, um, members, it's just.
Oh, okay, okay.
You can still ask and we can put that on the.
Next, okay. That sounds good. You have a motion?
Motion to, uh, approve the resolution creating a special events advisory committee.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carries five zero, thank you. Future items, does anyone have anything else for future agenda item? Time being seven thirty, meetings adjourned.